All right, let's call a meeting order. We have a good friend of ours, Grant Cantor, here to do the implication. Thank you, kind of appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Father, Heavenly Father, and Father, once again, Lord, we bow before you, Lord, asking you, God, to just watch over this board system your day. Lord, we thank you for our officials, Lord, that you sent to take care of our county, take care of our people. And, Lord, I pray that this decision that we've had before you, Lord, that you just watch over everything, Lord, and just keep us in that good way, so one day after while, Lord, you're going to call, and we're going to answer. And, Lord, I pray that everyone here, sound of my voice, will come with one mind, one accorded here tonight. And, Lord, I pray once again, our officials, that leads our county to a better place to lead. God, we ask this, and perhaps today we broke in heaven.
Amen. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, we want now to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the upright of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the call, Lord.
Here's.
Yes.
Here.
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 Don't think I was.
Here.
All right. Anyone wish to speak before the fiscal court? We have a sign in up here if you'd like to come forward, we go ahead and sign that. It's Heather, you even want to... We, I know you, we'll get you signed in a minute.
Okay.
I just want, if you're going to speak, I'll have my free time. All right, we're going to switch the agenda around just for just a moment and jump ahead to item 4A, which is to consider approved proclamation for U.S. Census. We have Ms. Vance here with the Census, and as part of the Census process, there has been a committee appointed, and she's asked that we do this partnership as part of the process, and you have that in front of you. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the 2020 Census partnership. And she also has provided some additional information for you, and has stated that you're willing to come at another meeting and go into more detail.
Yes, sir.
But she's like us, though, she's got another meeting she's got me to at 6:30 in West Liberty, and she's swinging by, and we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Motion not to vote.
I make one. Oh, you made one.
Is, will you make a motion?
I'll make one.
All right, motion been made, or second?
I'll second.
Motion been made, second, and further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, back to the agenda. Is there any reason we shouldn't pay the, well, minutes? Consider approve the minutes. I would like to send the minutes out to y'all, email, and everybody got them?
Yeah, we done them.
Okay. I'm going to vote. Got a motion, without a second? Second. Motion been made, second, and further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. Are there any reason we shouldn't pay the bill?
I'll make a motion.
We don't even, we just don't have to be putting on the bill, we just make a motion to not pay on the bill, but no, 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 so first, no objection, the bills will be paid. Treasurer explained, one transfer.
Okay, we need to transfer $5,000 from the general fund to the jail fund, $100,000 from the road fund to the general fund, and $200 from 911 fund to the general fund. This was deposited into the 911 fund by mistake, so we've got to put it back in the trust.
Hey, it was done by the state senate, the electronic deposit, we went through it. All right, I have that.
I'll make a motion to the fund.
All right, motion been made, or second?
Second.
Motion been made, second, and further discussion on bond transfer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. All right, you have the treasurer's report, and you have any questions on that?
You want me to read it?
Sure.
Hey, our balances at the end of August 31st, 2019, in the general fund, we had $142,517.21. In the road fund, $1,345,760.84. In the jail fund, $12,203.31. In the LGEa fund, $98,714.76. In solid waste, $14,895.25. And in 911, $145,380.25.
Any questions to issue the treasurer's report? Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion, second.
Motion been made, or second? Motion been made, second, and further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. All right. All right, Department of Record, enter house.
Okay, we'll start off with community center. The GM, the damage sections of rock ceiling have been replaced, walls have been painted, lights have been upgraded to LED lights. So if you haven't had a chance to go and look at it, it's really, really nice. Public restrooms, the hallway, the office have been painted now and are being upgraded to LED lights, too, which is going to help us, you know, on our costs, too, on the interest. We're going to be painting the ceiling walls and waxing the floors of the D.O.B. section, that'll be the final phase of that. Working on the floor, the gentleman was supposed to meet me today from Maxwell on the floor to see what we can do for that, on the, on repairing the floor and painting it. He was tired of the maintenance, he said he'd be, keep with me next week, so we scheduled that. And remember, we have Wi-Fi community center now, a guest Wi-Fi, if you want to use, which everybody loves, because any guests that come in, you know, for a reunion or whatever, can use it. Justice Center, we had a drain stopped up at the Justice Center, flooded the prisoner, it flooded the prison holding cell and prison elevator on the second floor. In doing that, it did some damage, of course, and the cost of repairing the elevator is $14,331. And they have requested a down payment, $7,165. We filed an insurance claim already, and they're sending a justice to look at it, so hopefully we'll get reimbursed for the cost of all the repair. The new acid wash that we tried on the brick up front didn't work, so we're going to have to paint it. So we have the paint to do that with, and we'll get that completed. Battlefield Park, good news on it, architect sent the building, construction, and plumbing plans to the state for approval. So once we get those, we can, you know, proceed with bidding that and working on that project. I've got lights up there now, if everyone's not seen them. There's two street lights up there, LED lights, electrics up there. I'm working on getting electric to the shelter with receptacles and lighting, so that's the next phase of that. Lining the backs of the bridge, I don't know if that's happy with that. The bridge's deck supports have been poured, waiting 10 days for concrete to cure, which some of those days have already passed. So he said he will be working on it again next Tuesday, and the only work that remains on it is removing the forms, backfilling the ends of the bridge pavements, and placing rock and dressing all the area around it.
Of course, a couple of trees there, I think you've...
Yeah, yeah, I thought you meant, I think he said those to be in Larry, the trees are a problem, but they're, he's got his estimator there still, so. And work is scheduled to be completed by Tuesday, October 1st, it should be driving across the bridge. And if you haven't seen it, it's, it's a really nice bridge.
Top of the line.
Top of the line. So we can drive anything we want across it, and you need, you probably need to look at it to see what's made of that thing.
18-inch floors.
Huh?
18-inch floor.
Yeah. It's, and the, the wing walls on it are 17 feet, so it takes it way back in, so the water, the blood water shouldn't get to it, so.
It's filled, sorry.
Yeah, should, and it needed it, that's a lot of water concerned there, so. But anybody got any questions about anything other than that?
We'll need to make a motion to override payment for that down payment, because they're not going to start working on the judicial center, on the elevator for him, until we do that.
It's the prison elevator.
And this is something where we're returning it through insurance.
Yeah.
Basically, what we had was some water damage, you know, from what H.P.A.C. units, and it resulted in extensive damage.
Yeah, it came in on top of the elevator, all those way particles.
I'll make a motion to, we have to have it.
We have to have it, and we, the interns have gone a part of it, or most of it, once we get the claims in, we've already held on our claim numbers, so this is just one of those unfortunate things, we're going to have to be upfront with the money to get it on the back. If we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Motion been made, second, and further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no. And I want to say, no road, we ain't going to have any road, of course, and we actually don't have anything, so. All right, a couple of things I want to say, we've been out, we've still got the coal patch going, we're approaching our past 50 roads that we've worked on, we've still got, what, 7,500 tons left.
Yeah.
And so, once that's exhausted, we'll, we'll take another look, see what we need to be doing. There is another blend, a winter blend, that we may or may not purchase, I have to, we'll have to look into that a little more. From the road department, and all my heads, and my deputy judge, he says, I was looking for another day, and he's on his knees over there painting trees. That's community center.
Yeah.
So it's, everybody's got hands on. The E.M. Director's been in training all week, community service director's working his team and stuff, we've got a really good team going, and, and things are looking up, and I appreciate everyone of y'all, and not, I'm not shorting anybody else, we've got great staff at the community center, at the judicial center, our road crews are going at it, I fight fire, and I appreciate all that. We don't have any committee reports, I don't believe, is anything on the veterans committee? Peter? Peter? Anything on the veterans committee?
Uh, no, we got a meeting the 10th, that we're going to work on score, get some resolutions together, and get some information together. We've got Matthew One on the WITs that you might want to talk about.
Yeah, I have, I have actually been able to contact with some of the relatives of the WIT brothers, and they are spread out all across the nation, and they have themselves come together and picked the date, the October the 19th, 10 o'clock in the morning, as we're standing right now. They are having a flag, I think it flew yesterday over the Arizona, in honor of Byron, that's still a tomb there, and we want to make this a big deal, as we do for all the veterans. But I want to pass something along, too, and I think there's maybe sometimes lack of communication that causes a lot of problems. But when we do these veterans memorial road names, that doesn't change the 911 address, that doesn't change the community name. This is a memorial that we're doing in honor of those veterans for their service and sacrifice, that's all it is. We're not changing any, any street names, we went through that already, we've got people that have mortgages and bank accounts and all those kind of things, that changing the street address again is a nightmare. We're not doing that, we're putting signs up and memorializing that, so that future generations, when they drive by, will see that, and maybe they'll want to go look and see, well, them guys that can do their research and find out. Because when we do these things here, we put these on the internet, they're their representative, be able to search this, these resolutions, and on, on the search engine be able to find it. So, so that's, that's the whole purpose of that.
Will, is there a priest woman?
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's why we're going through this process, to make sure that we do it right and do it for everybody. We got one up, and every time you go up the river now, you can see the one from Melton, it's right there, and, and if a lot of people see that. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval resolution for maintenance and/or ownership of roadway segments affected by the reconstruction of U.S. 460 and associated roadways. This is the frontage road in front of the high school. Where the city limits in, it's now going to be a county road in front of the high school, so we'll be responsible for maintaining and upkeep of that part of the road, and it'll be a new county road, and we, we have a resolution in here, given the specifics on, on the road. It's got all the coordinates and all that stuff, and I will go through reading all that, we'll be talking about it, but I entertain a motion to adopt in, I do a resolution, adopt in the, the roadway segments affected by U.S. 460.
I'll make the motion, is that going to have a name, or is it just...
That's something we'll have to do. I don't know, it'd be in front of the high school, it may be, it was at the high school to do. We'll, we do this, I'll contact the superintendent and the rest of them all, and let them come back with something, we can rename it with the next meeting.
I'm going to gaze and say it'll be point of draft.
That's what I think.
Or something like that.
Yeah, the other, yeah, it's my biggest warning. All right, we got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made, second, and further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. Next item is to consider and not approve the tax rate for all the taxing districts to be placed on the tax bills. Before we do that part, we have motor vehicle tax, this typically should be approved by October 1st, if it's not, it's automatically the rate it's always been. We could just not do nothing, that's not going to change, but I don't like that, that's where those take action on it.
Yeah.
The rate hasn't changed since 1983, it's 16.3 cents, and I'd say if we do nothing, it stays 16.3, but I think it needs to be in the minutes that we've done our, our approval tax rate. So I entertain a motion to approve 16.3 cents per hundred assessed value on motor vehicle or motor craft for the capital year of 2020.
Make the motion.
Motion been made, or second?
I'll second, and then with that, say about, what's, what's the neighboring counties that you want?
I have, I just, this town, I want to play for you.
Yeah. Taxes about to take us out.
Well, I don't know, I thought we reduced the other.
Yeah. We want to make it as easy as we can on everyone.
Yeah, that's necessary. All right, we, you second, and further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. All right, you have in your package the tax rates for all the taxing districts, and this is not us approving or disapproving anybody's tax rates, this is acknowledging that the rates improved and will be on the tax bill. I entertain a motion for the 2019 tax rates, this is supplied by the board.
Have they been raised as a means of violence?
Uh, some of them took compensating, and some of them, ours went back, we took part of that, but we can't do anything about that. We have no authority on the other taxing district, on our taxes. What we're doing is acknowledging, first, we've been on the taxes. Fair enough.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. All right, approved tile cover pits. At the last meeting, I hadn't really had a lot of time to go through it, we worked it all, the prices, the due comparisons, and development, so county attorney, I would need to award this, we had three vendors that bid, Drainside Limited, Tomahawk, and ICP. ICP's in Lexington, too.
London.
London. All right, and, and basically, all of the lot prices, for the majority of them, the local vendor, Tomahawk had the cheapest price, but on price delivered, the delivery price to the garage, ICP had the low price, so.
Is this plastic or...
This is a little bit of everything, you see what we're going down through, we've got down, plastic, get out every size, took this off of, of the pitch, did it through the technical.
I'd suggest plastic, because since I've been here, we've placed...
Oh, we've...
Probably replaced something you put in since you was magistrate, and I know I have since I've been magistrate here, but plastic's what we need, you know, you have enough.
That's, that's, and I think it, that's more than what we need to do.
Boy, it's been missing, it's like, like three to five years, it's rusted out, and the whole bottom is gone.
Well, that's, that's what we said. 13 years on the line.
Yeah, so let's, we need to use plastic.
Correct.
But on the bid, for all the different items that we, that we bid out, and we bid out two and a half acres worth, I would move, just for simplicity, that we accept Tomahawk for the lot price, and ICP for the delivery price, and we're obviously going to go and try to pick them up first, and if we can't get them, we'll contact the other company if their price, to get them delivered. ICP's delivery price is the same thing as their lot price, but it's a few cents more than what Tomahawk's is, but Tomahawk's got the cheapest lot price, and their deliveries prices a little more. So it'd be lot price, Tomahawk's delivery price, ICP.
Tomahawk, you can keep what you need there.
Generally, I think they pretty well, I mean, if something happens, they got it or can't get it, then we can get it, essentially the same price.
That's a good idea.
And that way, it keeps our options open, instead of you hanging around like, and we got somebody on the bid for both options.
Yeah. Make sure there's a day or so that you want to know if you need a tile, so you can contact.
It, it may be, right.
I think if you need.
Yeah. I made that for the motion, or second?
Second.
Motion been made, second, and further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. All right, at the last, end of the last meeting, we had a petition submitted to us by Mr. Martin, and this is, this road issue's been going on for a long time, and she's wanting us to adopt this into the county road system. I think county attorneys give us a little go down on it two or three times. I think the things that we need to do, after discussions with county attorney and others, about property legal, weight good, is we need to send this county surveyor out, and have him look at it, go where this is bringing one in, that's not in, and see if it's feasible, see if it meets all those standards that the law says it should meet, and then come back and report to us, and, and what it would cost to reconstruct, all those kind of things, and if it meets all those standards, then we'll sign the viewers, and we'll do the other thing to go out, and then come back with a report. I think that, that, that way, we're, we're following the law, and we're showing good faith that we're trying to do what's exactly we should be doing under law.
She is a citizen?
And she is, and she's got, she's got a right to file this, and we've got a duty to follow up on it, and we've got a duty to follow the law and do what we need to do for the best benefit of our, of ourselves.
Yeah.
I entertain, do I need a motion for that, or can I just come? All right, I need a motion to send the county surveyor out to survey this road and come back with a report on the requirement, see if it meets the requirements under law, get adopted in the road system.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, but, but, or second?
I'll second.
Motion been made, second, and further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. All right, the next petition is a petition for road closures made by Pitt Conley. You, Pitt, want to come up and talk to us about this? Or Johnny, or...
Johnny's his lawyer.
Is he his lawyer? It don't matter, it just whatever.
Get me away from you.
I've, I've got everything that you submitted, and, and it's a wheel, and we just want to make sure that there's no other errors, or anybody else has got, that would have something to say in it.
Yeah.
Before we can close. And, and there's a process that we'd have to go through by sending the surveyor out and putting advertisements up and all that, I mean, you know what I'm saying? The deed says that it's, that the property's going to its five sons, so is anybody else that they're a deed that just gives it to you on both sides of the road?
I'm not a deed to it.
Okay, well, that wouldn't...
You own it all.
Yeah.
I own, I own, I work the, the road, you know, I own all that.
Yeah, you have the deed with you.
Yeah.
But I have it, I think, from the last time, they didn't say that, and I would worry, I would worry that...
I think that's it, that's the only one.
Is anybody involved in this, to your family?
No, it's me, I don't even, I got to be there. Sit right here. Right here's my, the road, and by my, by my coal, we don't, don't, and this right here, mine, mine, and this, all right, so, and anyway, I own this side, this side, if you went down the road, so. I don't say nobody else. I don't say nobody else, I didn't even, I don't even have to be there. And this is never, you know, locked in, yeah.
I replace the overs, anyway.
Yeah, you're, you're breaking, whatever.
Do you think it's not contested? All right. So you looked at the deed and you said, and it, it'd be uncontested?
I think we've got the, on both sides. I thought we'd take the petition, uncontested, I guess.
Uncontested, all right, I entertain a motion to, to hold the Pitt Conley road.
I'll make a motion.
All right, second, or second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. motion carries. I just want to make sure that we had it done right.
All right.
All right.
Is that, is that, is that... That's me being, being, I'm, 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 right. So I'm all the way out of here.
All right. Item 4G is approved, create a new banking account for alcohol, alcohol tax receipts, and a transfer, the fiscal year receipts to date into that account. The audit of the prior administration for 2017, 18. And so, had a finding in it that, and we had, had them released it, when the action conference had said that we should have a separate banking account for alcohol tax receipts, so we're going ahead and getting ahead of the game, and getting that taken care of.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to have a second, second, motion been made, second, and further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, final item on the new business section is to consider approved White Associates CPAs to perform the annual financial audit and fiscal report. The last item, thing, attachment you have is the audit proposal, we went through the state auditor's office and got approval to do the CPA for the next three years, this will reduce cost, the one thing, but also, we'll have, we'll have a auditor lined up for the next three years, and we'll know exactly what it costs every year. The audit would be, their proposal is $27,000 a year, and we know state auditor, they bill, and just prior to walking into this meeting, we got the audit bills for the, the taxes and fees for the sheriff's department, and one year alone was $61,000. We've got a total of $334,000 worth of $79,000 worth of bills that we're going to have to pay the state auditor, so we'll be dealing with that, I think, at another meeting, and we'll work on trying to get a payment plan or something of that nature, because we can't afford that. But I entertain a motion to accept White Associates CPAs to do the audit for the next three fiscal years.
I'll make a motion.
Motion been made, or second? Motion been made, second, and further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who vote no, motion carries. All right, we have any other bits to come forward? Motion to accept, all right, so. The next item is executive session. We have a proposal from Runkie on, on gas, or gas, garbage collections, and we have to decide whether we want to renew, or if we want... And, um, we have to, to decide whether we want to renew or if we want to, uh, bid this out. And under the, uh, Open Meetings Act and, and fairness to our current vendors, should we decide to bid it out, it would be unfair, it would be unfair to them if we disclosed what rates they proposed. So, we're gonna be entering executive, I, I need a motion to enter executive session pursuant to sixty-one point eight one zero, subsection one, G, and K. I need that on the mark, when you make the motion. All right, I need a second.
I'll say it.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those vote no. All right, we're gonna step in here, we're just gonna go into Jacob's office, and, uh, and, and we'll be back in just a second.